Time is 7:05. We've got a lot of business to do tonight. We've got an impending storm, so I'm going to move right along. All three seconded at present. According to Secretary's present, I'm Minister's present, and according for the public that Lowridge, Mr. Leo Martell in video.
Okay, I have three minutes, gentlemen. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 8th, 2018.
Has amended Dave?
Yep. There were only a couple of minor changes.
No second to motion.
Any discussion in those minutes, gentlemen?
No.
Hearing not all in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to accept the non-public, uh, November 8th, 8:52 minutes.
All seconded by motion.
Any discussion in those minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, those are C F two.
Yep.
Non-public was non-November.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for Thursday, November 8th, for Dunbar Board Selectment Meeting for non-public. It was done at 9:30 in the morning on Thursday, November 8th.
Yeah, don't second the motion.
Bob, any discussion in those minutes?
No.
I was not present at the meeting.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Chief, I just want to make sure you've got a copy of those minutes for your preview to look at. Just FYI, give them.
Yeah.
Lean will make sure you get the minutes. Okay, I'm going to open up this meeting for public comment. We have an agenda. We're going to be 7:15 or shortly thereafter. After that, we'll be discussing about the Page's Corner Traffic Study. But first, I'm going to open it for public comment. This is where if you've got something of value to say that's not on the agenda, or you just want to, something of concern to you, please state your name for the record, your, and your address, and, uh, we'll go from there. I'll start in the back row.
Just that the Reefs Cross Dunbarton will be December 8th. 10 o'clock, we'll have a ceremony on the commons by Caleb statue and then disperse. Monday, we marked all the graves of the veterans, and so it's all ready to go. Snow or no snow?
What time on December 8th?
December 8th.
10 a.m.?
10 a.m.
Gotcha.
Woody?
All set.
All set. Back row? John?
All set.
Anything? Okay. Next row, second row, second row? Anything? First row? We're good to go. Okay. Want to close public comment and continue on?
Whatever.
And, uh, do we have a check for $185, man?
We do. Number, I think they have eight.
Exactly.
Five checks.
I'm going to make a motion per RSA 31 and Coolin 95 dash B, Home Rule 3, Paragraph B, to accept a donation in the amount of $185 for Reefs Cross Dunbarton from several local residents donations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. No discussion?
No.
Good job, Don.
Yep, as always.
We are at 7:15.
Yeah, we've got a few minutes. That's exactly what I'm doing. Okay, Bob, I'm just gonna skip to a few items in the mailbox and keep things going. We're going to start at 7:15 sharp for the, uh, public hearing, so we're going to allow some others to get in. We don't want to start too soon, and then people will get upset. Okay, uh, Mr. Bob FYI, we got a letter from Cohen Steel referencing the, uh, the amount of money on the, uh, that they would give to the steel if we decide to go down that path.
Pending to that one, please. We have a letter from Cohen Steel. They're the supplier of the steel for the town hall building. And then the contractor that was hired to repair the roof purchased the steel for that roof through Cohen. Never paid the supplier for the steel. Uh, we have a balance of money left over that was not paid out to the contractor, and we're going to try and pay that portion of the money to Cohen Steel to try and make them whole for at least the cost of their material, because they did supply the product to the town of Dunbar. So, uh, we've discussed it earlier, we're consensus to pay them. And so we've attached a copy of their new invoice with a copy of their previous invoice. And, um, I guess, and Lee may get consensus to avoid that we pay the portion money that we've at least got left there.
Yeah, I think so.
We talked about maybe not paying it to Coolin until we decide to use the steel when we get the engineering back with the wood. But at least pay them the portion that we have left. And that will empty that fund out for the end of the year for Lee and Chris.
Correct. Yeah. Because you may not even, if we're unfortunate to get a timber fray, though we may not even go with steel.
Right. It gets out of the, uh...
And this won't make them 100% whole, Bob, but it'll...
I know it, but it'll at least sit over here. Yeah. And it's sitting there anyways.
Right. So let's, uh, we'll plan, we'll move the money to, uh, remaining balance closely. Okay, very good. Okay. Well, I'm going to just, uh, I had some old business in last meeting. Remember I tabled, we tabled the idea of the insurance discussion of eliminating the grandfather clause?
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I was thinking of this week. I'd like to, uh, maybe take it off the table, just readdress it, not today, but maybe in the time of maybe when we redress the personnel plan in the summer, then we further discuss it. So I'd like to, I'd like to rescind my motion from last week, and, um, and so, and move it to the point where I'll bring it up again during when we look at the personnel plan.
And it's a good suggestion, because I was going to rescind the second anyways, because I think we need to see what's, how we compare with other communities. And we do have a tiered system, and, uh, you know, until we know exactly what's out there, we don't have enough information.
Yeah. I did provide the, I crunched the numbers. You have a copy in your basket, so you can use that for reference.
But, but the point is that we don't have enough comparison information. And I brought up, I seconded the motion only to bring up the debate or discussion. There wasn't a whole lot, you know? So we tabled it so we could address officially, let everybody else clear the cobwebs, but I was, you know, I don't have enough stuff to say this is the right or wrong thing to do. So I'd rather put it off, you know, if some people want to call communities and find out how they address it, and if there are people that are grandfathers or whatever. I mean, uh, we have plenty of time, so summertime, when we have those off week meetings, would be a good time to look at that. I don't think this is the time to jump in. You're changing the plan, number one, give people a chance to get used to the plan. And the other thing is, we'll see how it all works out, you know? The rest of it.
If you guys could see from last week, I thought it was too much to do in one year, and they've already changed the health insurance plan. I think that taking it one step at a time is what we're going to do next summer.
So as a second to that motion, I would rescind.
So we're in consensus?
So we're in consensus.
Okay. So be it. All right, now, time is 7:15. One of the issues that I, I started the last, about, over the last year, uh, was Page's Corner and that wonderful intersection, which no one knows how to turn into or turn out of or whatever. And what was, uh, what brought it to even immediate attention, we had a, uh, a fatality there, and that drove it home for me. And so with that fatality, I asked the, um, Police Department to look into, what do we new, what do we do to change that? And so early this year, we had a meeting with the Department of Transportation that was chaired by the, uh, they had a meeting with us, Police Department, the Board of Selectmen met together, and they prepared some proposals for us. And it's a state road, and they control what happens, but they like to obtain input from the town. And the purpose of this meeting is a, is an information meeting, and again, a feeling for how residents feel about it, and we're going to get some input from you all. And with that, I want to give, decide, I'm going to, to basically give an overview, and along with assist from the police chief, who was all at the meeting, and give an overview, because we have the report now. And that's step one. And to do something immediately. Step two, um, and Chris will, Sergeant, will talk about it some more, but in order to change something to state, you've got to get into a queue. It's a 10-year queue to do anything. And they say 10 years is an estimate. It could be 16 years. But the thing is, if you don't put your name in there, or put your, take a ticket and stand in line, you're never going to get anything done. And we're taking the steps now to get in the queue. And I want to commend the Police Department for taking the lead on this, so Chris is all yours.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Romillard. I think I know most of you. I've spoken with many of you about this meeting coming up and the road safety audit report from the DOT. Before I dive into this, does everybody have a handout? Um, the handout, you'll see that first page is a CAD drawing. Dunbar resident John Stevens put that together for us. Following that, you'll see some traffic turn count movements. The Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission was our partner in this project, and they put together that data for us. And essentially what that is, is looking at lead computer times in the morning and afternoon, and how many cars are turning into and out of that intersection. And then Pages three and four are road safety audit report that was compiled by the Department of Transportation. Diving into the intersection, we just have some graphics up here. I think most everyone is familiar with the configuration of the intersection, but it's important to note, uh, this graphic over here, if you're driving westbound, you have a 35 mile per hour warning sign coming up, followed by a 35 mile per hour speed sign coming through the intersection, you have the right of way going westbound. If you're heading eastbound, just like the other direction, you have another 35 mile per hour warning sign, 35 mile per hour speed sign, a warning for a stop ahead, which is just past the entrance to Old Ford Estates. Jewett Road, heading north out of town, there's a stop sign here, stop sign heading eastbound, and a stop sign coming from Stark Highway North if you're heading northbound. So as everyone is familiar, it's a three-way stop configuration. What we see as a police department is a lot of driver confusion at that intersection. And certainly when we open up for public comment, I'm sure there's a lot of people who have witnessed accidents or had near misses themselves. The Department of Transportation came up with essentially four options. The first three are what they call short-term solutions. Option number one would be to add oversized stop signs. So it would keep the three-stop configuration. Right now, the stop signs are around two feet in size. What they're proposing is to add stop signs around three feet in size. There's also some talk about adding, uh, some additional warning signage, potentially some fixed speed readout display signs as you come into that intersection, giving that visual readout, hey, you're driving too fast, you need to slow down. Um, and then they also talked about, there's, um, some shrubbery right by the Molly Stark property. If you're heading, um, eastbound, it's on your right-hand side, they're talking about trimming that back as well. So that's option one. So again, it would keep the same configuration, but it would add some oversized signage, and potentially some additional signage to warn people of the intersection and the speed itself. Option two, as suggested by the DOT, would be to remove the eastbound stop sign. What this would do at the intersection is east and westbound traffic would have free-flowing right-of-way. North and southbound traffic would have to stop. Again, that's option two. Option three from the DOT would be to add a stop sign and make it a four-way stop configuration. Finally, option four is the long-term solution. That would be to add a roundabout. What we did is we applied for Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission's Long-Term Transportation Plan for a roundabout. We received an estimate from an engineer, and at today's prices, it would have a price tag of around a million dollars. We would extrapolate that out 10 years with inflation, who knows what it's going to be? But as the chairman said, it at least gets us in the queue for that project. If money is allocated down the road for a roundabout, the town can still come and say, yes or no, we want to pursue that. But at least it gets us in the queue for an option down the road. So that's essentially the DOT options. And I'll, I guess, turn it over to the chief if there's any additional things that I missed.
He's gone. Chris covered it pretty well, is, as far as what the, uh, what the options are. The one thing that I noticed following the tally is this, the bush that's located over, in the, on the eastbound lane at that eastbound stop, when you're parked at the stop, at the stop line here, it really blocks your view of this oncoming traffic. It, it doesn't allow you to see that the other vehicle's coming, so I think as an immediate solution, and that's something that we could do, the, the bush itself is on private property. So I believe we'd have to get landowner permission to be able to remove that. But that's something we could do pretty much immediately. And then there's various opinions on whether we should go with a four-way stop or two-way stop. Okay, so, then, three options, I, I mean, we have to do something. I think the three-way stop, in my opinion, is super confusing, unless you live here and you know it by heart. But I think it's when any, any visitor coming up to this town, and they see that, that configuration, massive confusion. And some people just stop dead in the road, don't want to, don't know what to do. We've all seen that. So I'm just going to open up public comment now. If you've got a comment, or which way you think we should be leaning, let us know. So just raise your hand, and I'll call on you.
I'll be the first victim.
Go ahead. Fred, state your name.
I'm Mullen, Little Stack Lane. I've been on the fire department 45 years. I've been to many, many accidents in that intersection. I've been to two fatalities. One at the intersection, and one halfway between the intersection and the power lines. Now, if you're coming east from Route 77, the problem you have there, as you go, before you get to the deli, you're cresting a hill, okay? And you're looking into the sky, that beautiful sky, especially in the fall with the leaves on the side. People are looking in the sky because they're doing this. Now, uh, you've got to bring your eyes down for the stop sign. Nobody sees that little red light up there either. I've been, so a lot of people say, they go through the stop sign, they get in an accident. What stop sign? NFSR. Okay? For me, the solution to that is, you bring alternating red lights on the stop sign, like a school bus. Okay? Now you're bringing your eyes down, or else you have a circular light, I've seen somewhere on stop signs, they're flashing right there, the stop, because they have to bring their eyes down. Also, another problem coming east, 7:00 in the morning, you can't get through that intersection because the people coming east play train. I've seen it many times. The first car to go through, there are four or five cars that stick right in their bumper and go through. Now, if you're going from Stark Highway North, you're playing a guessing game. Is that person going to stop or not? Is that person turning left because he didn't, or right, he didn't have a directional light on? Coming the other way, is that person going to go straight? Is he coming right, or coming left? You're playing a guessing game there. A lot of times, people start off, and somebody goes to stop from the stop sign. Okay? Now, with these, all these reports, they never, never think of the wintertime. Coming west from Clinton Street, the power lines, the temperature drops right there, the road freezes fast right there, because you're getting the north wind coming down through the power lines. I've seen it many times. That road's been so white, she couldn't stand up on it. I've been to a fatal right there. Okay? What happened with that? The person's coming westbound, they try to make the hill, they slid sideways, people on the car coming the other way, killed the person. That, if you put a roundabout, you put a two-way stop, you're compounding a problem in the wintertime, because the cars are going to stop, and they're not going to be able to make it up that hill. I've seen DOT with dump truck back up the hill to sand the road, because you couldn't get traction to sand that road. Okay? So for roundabout, the meeting's no good, because you're compounding a problem. You're also compounding the train problem coming east in the morning, because now they're going to ride away to go through, they're not going to stop, and there's going to be 40 cars going through. Mark my words, they do that Wallace Road to high school kids. They'll play train, and nobody else can go around. Coming off Jewett Road, what they need there is another stopper head sign down towards our Dry Hydra. The reason why? Because you're cresting the, the hill in Jewett Road, and all of a sudden, you, whoop, I'm at the intersection, because it's just stopped right there. You come onto that intersection, just like that, and I see people blow that intersection also. Never see that stop sign to the last second. So to me, they need a stopper head sign a little further down to warn them. Okay? Now, like I said, you never think of the wintertime, because if you have a two-way stop, the traffic's going to go, it's going to help the traffic going westbound, not the eastbound, because they're just going to bowl right through. Okay? And, uh, so I would really, to me, the best option is option number one. Okay? Because first of all, you've got to bring your eyes down, because I've seen it happen before, and many people say, what stop sign? Now, coming, and also, people don't use the directional lights. Now, the bottom line is one word to solve one less problem. It's called courtesy. You know how it used to be, well, you go, you go, you go, you go. Now the answer to this, I'm here first, I'm going. That's part of the problem. But I would hate to see them put a stop sign coming westbound, because you're going to compound that problem, guarantee you, especially in the wintertime, because people don't think of the wintertime. We do. I've been there in car accidents. Okay? So you want the westbound traffic to keep flowing, because they've got to make the hill. Sometimes, when you stop on that hill, you've got to, it's not easing up as you go up the hill, otherwise you're not going to make it. Same with Jewett Road. You know, like I said, that's my opinions. I hope DOT listens and thinks ahead, not just, oh, here's a report, let's do something, because think of what's, you put a stop sign there, think of the consequences, summer, winter, and fall. Now, going west certain times of the day, okay, you get the sun directly in your eyes if you're heading towards where, from the, now, the west, sun setting, you know? So that's a problem that people have got to be aware of too. But, uh, I'm all for solving the problem, but guarantee you, the traffic circle and two-way stop is not the answer. No way. Guarantee you, because you're going to compound that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Our, uh, Don Larson, Portview Drive. Are the rumble strips available for this, uh, coming at the bridge?
They sparted about them, but they were a little bit too noisy, I think, in the neighborhood there, as people were approaching that with the residential houses. The DOT didn't suggest using the rumble strips because of the additional noise in the neighborhood.
What about be right by the bridge, you know, just, you know, coming from the transfer station, coming, uh, east? Far enough out?
I just want to speak on the rumble strips. I vacation up in Jackman, Maine, and they have loose warning signs up there with those, with those rumble strips across the road. And, and the campus stayed at, at night, when the trucks came, and when the cars came, that's all you could hear. It carried a long, long way. So, yes, they're very effective in catching the attention of the drivers. They will drive the people who live in that neighborhood out of their mind, because all they're going to hear, every time a car comes up the road, is that. It'll make them crazy. So, so for that reason, it's, it's really not a, um, a good idea.
Well, how about lighting the, uh, signs and putting them further out, so that they see them when they come across that bridge before they start going up the hill?
Yeah, that was a suggestion on option number one.
Yeah.
And also, as Chris spoke to, uh, they talked about putting a solar, um, speed sign there that was permanent, the town would own after. I think Chris maybe could speak a little more on that, but that sign would be there permanently, so it'd be like one of the police flashing when you're speeding going through that intersection, to try and slow that traffic coming from where down before they get to that stop sign, because they come in there pretty hot sometimes. I know I wait a long time to make sure they're not going to go right through, you know? I make sure they stop before I pull out, even though I have the right of way.
Yeah, the problem in the afternoon is the westbound traffic. And if you don't have the three-way stop there, you'd never get across, you know? Because you have to wait for a break in that westbound traffic.
Okay.
Point of clarification, do we have statistics as to, I know we have, speak of a fatality, do we have statistics as to how many fatalities, or conversely, how many accidents in that for a year, two, three?
Can I speak to that?
Yes. Kind of piggybacking on what Fred said, um, very, very knowledgeable, he's been on the fire department a long time, so if he says there's been two fatalities in the vicinity of that intersection, I in fact know of one from last year. So two fatalities, there is crash data statistics that we have, I actually didn't bring those with me tonight. The crashes themselves at that intersection aren't as many as people may think, but I think the source of frustration is the near misses that people have. We certainly have plenty of fender benders and motor vehicle crashes there, but it's certainly not, um, I wouldn't call it plentiful, I wouldn't call it, um, you know, we, we don't have like 50 or 60 a year, we maybe have a dozen somewhere in that vicinity, which is still a lot, but it's certainly not as many as, as some people think. The, the speed signs, speaking from the police department sign, I think is a good idea. What the DOT talks about is installing, as Dave said, some solar-powered speed readout signs, so there's a couple of different options. You could put them, you know, east and westbound, north and southbound, or if DOT was wanting to do it, you could put one at each, uh, corner of the intersection as it drops down to 35, just to kind of give people that visual display that Fred was talking about, bring their eyes back down. They would pay for the initial install, the town would be responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance, so if something was to go wrong with a sign, uh, if something needed to be replaced, that would, that cost would be borne by the town. Thank you.
Well, if we were to move with that, is there an ETA for installation?
My impression...
What was the question?
She wants to know, is there an estimated time of install if we went with the option of putting the signs right away?
When we met with the DOT, um, they're, they're very busy. It took, I think roughly three months to get the actual report with their recommendations, that two-page report. With that being said, after conferring with the town and officials, I think if we put something together that we want to see done and sent to the state, my impression is that this is a priority for them, and they do want to see some safety improvements. So my, I think it would be fairly quick. What's interesting to note, right, wrong, or indifferent, if you look at that road safety audit report, the DOT recommends option three, which is a four-way stop. And I think there is some merit to what Fred's saying about, you've got to take into consideration some, some weather components as well. I was always under the impression, whether it's correct, incorrect, or correct, I don't know, that the reason for the three-way stop configuration is because of that grade heading westbound, which is why it is the way it is. So I found it interesting that the DOT is now saying, well, the safest option is to put in another stop sign, and that's all outlined right in the report.
Great.
I was also under the impression that... Oh, Torre Ward, Stark Highway North.
Thank you.
I was also the impression that that might be the case for the three-way stop, because getting up the hill, if you stop, you may be in trouble in the winter. But I think from the near misses I've, that have certainly caught my attention personally, and the fatal accident last year, it appears that southbound traffic, as well as some of the northbound, doesn't adhere to even close to the speed limit. When I've seen people go straight through that, including the tractor trailers, it didn't appear that they were even remotely close to 35 miles an hour. It may only be perception, but I like the idea of the flashing signs, certainly 13 headed west, I guess, and 77 headed east, that if we could get more attention drawn to that reduced speed, maybe that would also draw more attention. And, uh, there's another thing that I've observed, previously at the intersection of Wallace Road, and I think it was Shirley Hill, the town of Bedford had solar-powered lights on the stop signs. And since then, removed, I believe that was not a poor, a proper area for solar due to the wooded coverage. But it certainly grabbed your attention. And, uh, also, near the Bedford High School, they had large stop signs that were rimmed with flashing LEDs, which also grabbed your attention. Like was said, brings your attention back to the stop sign. That one overhead just doesn't seem to cut it. It seems like it's easily missed by the distracted drivers, and it just doesn't seem to be enough. Perhaps even a flashing light on the, where the speed reduction starts at that warning sign might also bring more attention down to, you've got to slow down, and there's that ahead as well. But I, I wonder if it might be a lot of the speed combined with... But I, I wonder if it might be a lot of the speed combined with the distraction and simple people ignoring.
And, and Torin, there's certainly some merit to your speed observation. I actually asked one of our officers who conducts a lot of traffic enforcement at that intersection and writes a lot of tickets at that intersection, what the gentleman sees for speed of people who either have the right of way going through westbound or people who flat out blow through the stop sign, uh, or stop signs. And he said it's usually around forty-eight to fifty miles an hour. Um, the fatal crash that we had, um, the gentleman was in excess of fifty-five miles an hour going through that stop sign. So there's definitely merit to your observation on the speed and I think there is something to be said with the solar-powered option. I think that's, regardless of what we choose as a town, I think adding in some type of uh, flashing lights or solar-powered beacons or something to bring your attention and keep your attention there. Um, because no matter what configuration we choose, we still have to try and mitigate human error and people not paying attention and, and the more signage and cautionary signage and lights that you have there, I think we can reduce that. So I think that the beacons are a great idea, certainly.
Alex, I'm on Starker Way North, very close to that intersection. And I'm, I'm very, very happy that after ten years living there, finally something is hopefully done. Um, up until Fred spoke, I was favoring the four-way stop, which I think is very confusing for, as you already said, or someone said earlier, for, for non-residents to, to think, oh, it's just a three-way, the upcoming traffic can go through. So I think slowing down traffic heading east is a wonderful idea, are the lights too. Um, maybe it will help, but it will not help the confusion, so maybe we need to have extra LEDs about around the three-way stop notification or make that more clear, that upcoming traffic will not stop.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm good to see you because that way you guarantee it's only gonna be two minutes. Uh, I'm Tom Cassano, my wife Karen, we live at ten Old Ford Lane. Uh, we had a kind of a neighborhood association meeting a week or so ago in which we discussed, you know, some of the options that were put forth on this, and I'm not speaking for the association, but want to verbalize a few things that came out of that. And also let you know that, um, my experience has been with some road signs on, in Concord when Love and Rubble was being changed and developed from three ninety-three going in, we met with the state dozens of times about how they're gonna do the intersection, how they're gonna do the signage, how the traffic lights were gonna go, and a lot of the public input and the business input implemented changes to their plans. So the input that we give them is very critical. Uh, but I think you need to look at the process we're going through because we're kind of, you know, Fred gave us some tremendous background information on what the problems are at the intersection. So then you identify the problems and you have to figure out, alright, what do we get to solve the problems? And then we're kinda throwing out some ideas about, you know, a stop sign, traffic sign, rumble strips, whatever. But you need to sit back and say, alright, what is the problem? Let's identify that, let's figure out the ways to solve each problem. And the intersection doesn't have one problem, it's got multiple problems. You know, the traffic coming from the where direction, you're coming down across the expressway over the, over the dam, you know, where the guardrails on the side, where you feel like you're on the runway of the airport and you're gonna, you know, fly through there. Then you come over the hill and all of a sudden it drops to thirty-five. And, you know, you see a lot of skid marks when people finally realize, oh Jesus, a stop sign about a hundred feet in front of me, they're going downhill to the stop sign, and if it's a little bit slick, psh, they're sliding right through it. So there's, there's a lot of problems, the, the icy conditions in the wintertime come in that direction. So you identify what the problems are, then you sit down and say, okay, you know, one of the problems is we need to control speed. Uh, the other is we need to inform the drivers that aren't aware of what the intersection is, how to go through the intersection properly. Uh, you know, Karen pointed out, you pull up to the stop sign and there's a sign that's about half the size of this right here that says, three-way, three-way stop intersection. Now, as Fred mentioned before, they don't even see the, the light up ahead, because you know, it's a nice day and everything, they'll look in that direction, they'll see the stop sign. So you sit down and say, okay, well, what is gonna, what is gonna solve that problem? And what's gonna solve the problem of the visibility the other way and the people coming north? How do you identify? And we threw out some ideas just at that meeting that I've seen around the state. And, you know, part of that is, alright, I'm gonna sit down, I'm mid past two minutes. The, the, there's approach signs available. I've been in other towns where you come up and there's a dangerous intersection, a quarter mile ahead or half a mile ahead. Well, there's the sign a half mile back that says, dangerous intersection ahead. Alright, so for us who live here, we know there's a dangerous intersection there. But for a tourist or somebody coming through, you alert them a half a mile or quarter mile before the intersection, you're coming to a dangerous intersection, alright, you've raised their awareness, now they're starting to think, okay, I gotta stop looking at the trees and start looking for this dangerous intersection. And this is stuff that doesn't have to take a ten-year plan with the state. Uh, you simply sit down as a, as a town and with people who've traveled these roads every day for five years or forty years and say, let's identify these problems, let's come up with ways of solving the problems. If you go to the state with a plan and say, this is what we wanna do, because here's the, here's the issues we've identified and this is how we wanna solve the problems. That's how traffic engineers think. Traffic engineers don't like to just have people throw in emotional suggestions. You have to go back with data, you have to go back with, here's the, here's the problem, here's a solution to the problem, here's where it's used elsewhere in the state, and this is where it's effective. They'll implement it and they'll do it quickly because they don't have to go back and do any other studies on it and justify spending two hundred dollars on a road sign that, you know, that we would put up in a heartbeat. They have to rationalize that it's okay to put it in their budget. Uh, and a couple other suggestions we had for increasing visibility, and this is just things that we, that I've picked up in working with other traffic situations in Concord, is, um, I don't know how many of the problems we have are there at nighttime, but, I mean, we just came through that intersection on our way here, and how much visibility there is at night there? Zero. There's not one light anywhere around that intersection. Now, any intersection you go to in any city that's a high-traffic intersection or a dangerous intersection is lit up like it's, you know, Fenway Park. But this intersection is pitch black. And we've, I've seen numerous night, night crashes there. And I don't know if it's related to the person, you know, fell asleep at the wheel, or they just couldn't see where they were going. Uh, or they come up to an intersection that's black, but they got this one flashing light up here that's gonna drag, draw their attention up here, and they don't see this little two-foot square stop sign that had no warning that they were coming up to a stop. So there's built-in hazards in this intersection that we've kinda taken for granted because we're used to it. But for people who are used to it, you're, you're really throwing them into a quagmire of an intersection because they come up and it really throws them into a tizzy.
Totally agree.
So when you identify the problems and then you come up with sound solutions, and some of it might be, you know, if you put two, we, we pay for the streetlight at the end of our road because we want that, that intersection lit. And we want it lit because it's safety for us to turn into that intersection, because there's this nice stone flower thing right in the middle of the road, and if it's black enough, I'll be the first guy that's gonna hit it. So we have that intersection lit to make it safer, so, you know, if we can afford the eighteen dollars a month for that streetlight, then certainly the town can afford thirty-six dollars a month for two streetlights on that intersection. And I believe now if you go with the LED streetlights, it's probably like ten bucks a month. So that's a very low-cost solution, I mean, it would be going, an ongoing expense. But if you, if you light it up, if we have to provide some power to a stop sign because the solar isn't gonna be sufficient there, if we have, if you have double flashing lights up there, you know, so I, we, you come down three ninety-three coming into Concord and you hit Commercial Street, and first it says, slow down, stop ahead, that's back about a half a mile, then you come up and there's two yellow flashing lights, you know, bang, 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 well, and they're bright, that catches your attention. So you say, okay, something's happening here, I gotta pay attention. But you come up to our intersection and the only thing we use that light for is if there's a power outage, we know if the power's back on, if the light's on. So if you, if you take this approach and you gather all the information and you get some people that can really, particularly the police department, they're, they're identifying the problems all the time. Identify the problems, come up with sound solutions that are cost-effective and can be done in very timely fashion, you know, tomorrow would be good as far as if all of us are concerned. Uh, and present it to the state, they'll do it real quick. If you leave it open-ended, they'll, you know, it'll be years.
We met with them and this, these were their proposals, they wanna hear back from us. They're not gonna start, they're not gonna isolate this to one proposal, they're gonna listen to what we, they're looking for our input.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to decide what the improvements have to be. If we go with option one, you have to come back and say, this is why we went with option one, and here's everything we need to make this work. Because their proposals, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's more than one paragraph, they, they couldn't have taken them three months to write two paragraphs. Oh yeah, good. The, uh-
Job security.
But when, when you go back, you can't just say, we like option one, you said, so we like option one, and here's all the things we wanna see built into option one.
In addition, I agree. Okay.
Sir, your name?
Ed Wagner, Penny Hill Road.
Thank you.
Uh, most of what everybody said is exactly what I was gonna say, the fact that you need more lights. If I don't know if any of you have been around where the Bedford Schools is, but they got this flashing light around the stop sign that you can't miss. So something like that would be immediate, like you say, bring the, like he said, to bring the tension down to that. A little bit of advanced warning is very helpful, the dangerous intersection and stuff like that. So I would like to say that that would be a great thing to do. The stop sign on the westbound side is, is a definite no-no, especially in the wintertime. You get at night at five o'clock, when everybody's coming home and they start stopping on that intersection, you're gonna have one heck of a line of cars trying to get up that hill, if the, the weather is bad. So all of that stuff is definitely something we gotta consider. But one other thing that we, we could consider too, is it was mentioned that there was this little tiny sign, three-way stop, but we should really put on that sign, not only is it a three-way stop, but they need to yield to the oncoming traffic, because a lot of people think, oh, I can stop there stopping, um, you know, I can take off and all of that stuff. I've seen numerous misses and they're, I mean, you, almost daily, you can see a miss on there when you're coming through there. But to put a sign that says, stop, three-way stop, and yield to oncoming traffic, or yield to traffic coming from the right, or yield to traffic coming from the left. That way, anybody that is unfamiliar with that intersection is gonna know what they're supposed to do. Because that was one of the points that was brought up, is that they're confused. Oh, and also, if they put up the, the roundabout, or they put up the four-way stop, or the, just put up two-way stop signs on Jewett and thirteen, you're gonna run into the problem of, you're never gonna get out of thirteen northbound. Because everybody's gonna be zipping through there, zipping through there, zipping through there, coming from where. And I mean, just getting out of there now is hard. So I, I think that the solution of the three-way stop signs with a lot more information and a lot more flashing to bring your attention to it would be very helpful.
Thank you. Any more comments? Go ahead, sir.
Brian, you have number six sixty-two, Old Ford. Um, I have to conclude all the comments everyone else has said today, I'm not in favor of, of four-way stop.
Some of the other options that the state brought, we talked about the rumble strips, that was, uh, turned down because of the noise. We looked at, we even asked about the stoplights, uh, regular three-way stoplights or normal stoplights, not enough traffic to support it, so that was thrown away. Um, the, the roundabout is, uh, is just one idea, they, they even thought of making a turning lane uh, coming up on Clinton Street, uh, making a turning lane, expanding that road to as a turning lane uh, to help, so you can have throughput traffic and then have a turning lane there. So those are just long-term options, but I think that right now, what, what we wanna do is we've got, summarize some of your comments. Chris will put them together and, uh, it looks like we're looking at, I, I see a lot of emphasis on option one. Any other, any, does anyone strongly on anything else, any other option that anyone feels strongly about? Sound off, go ahead, John.
Yeah. John Trottier, three hundred Stock Highway North. Um, a couple of things everybody needs to remember, that's their road. So they'll take our, our, our feedback, but again, it's their road. And I work with the DOT quite often, and again, they don't do things half-ass, period. Couple of, couple of comments that I have about putting, uh, speed indicator signs. They, they, we've implemented, implemented them in the community that I work in, and I have found that people use it as a, uh, as a toy.
Okay, exactly.
Seriously, yeah, so.
How high can I make it go today?
You got it, yeah. When the police aren't around, I've sat there and I've watched it. Because I, I sit there to make sure the thing operates, that's my, that's part of my responsibility. So personally, I think again, really a four-way stop is, is the right option. I totally understand, again, the, the grade coming up from the east is gonna be a, a situation, but again, DOT and, and public works, they understand, again, you have to spend a little more time and care salting and sanding that particular intersection. So those are kinda some of my thoughts. Roundabout, again, that's a ten-year plan, so it's gonna take a long time for that to be implemented. And will it, will it work? Probably would work. The only other thing, two more comments. If they do the, if they do implement the, their recommendation as far as a four-way stop, they need to make sure that they reduce the shoulder on heading, uh, westbound, coming up from Concord on Clinton Street.
People go right around.
Because idiots will go around. Yeah. That and also, uh, yeah. Be, you're gonna get complaints, doesn't matter what you do. And you know what, I've been to plenty, plenty of public meetings like this, and we're all traffic engineers. Because we all drive, everybody's a traffic engineer.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that the roundabout getting into the queue is a bad thing because they redo the ten-year plan in Concord every two years.
Correct.
And they keep pushing it along so that you may never see it in the near future, but at least if it's in the queue down the road, not knowing what the population in the area's gonna be.
Yeah.
It might be a solution that they can look at. And not being in there doesn't give them any opportunity of having it, because you can always say no.
And you can al- always reduce what you're proposing as well.
Right.
So like-
It's really a ten to twenty-year program really, by the time you go through the formalities.
About a thirty.
It does, that never makes it, you have to realize that ninety, the widening of ninety-three started fifteen years ago when they were starting to do that, and they're still playing games with every two years with what they're gonna do. So just imagine what a round, how long it'll take to get a roundabout.
I have two questions, two other comments, one on the side, we can go right.
Yes, Rich Schaefer, eighty Old Ford Lane. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Tom on using the word quagmire, I think that's the word of the evening. Plus he got the queue, so he gets ten points for that too, so congratulations to Tom for that. In, in respect to that too, the sign that he was mentioning, the problem not only is the size, but it's verbose. You can't read all those words that quickly when you're driving. So if we do put signs up, I just would encourage using minimal words of a large size that are easily too easy to read, especially with the light conditions that have been mentioned, especially heading on, uh, westbound through that intersection, so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Karen, Chris on Old Town, Fort Lane. Uh, I'm definitely not in favor of a roundabout option, so I like option one more. I guess the concern is we also own the property at two Jewett Road, which is right on that corner, across from the Molly Stark House. Uh, roundabouts take a lot of space and a lot of land. Uh, I would hate to see anything eating into the Molly Stark property, it's already pretty close to the edge there and, uh, and our property as well, so I would definitely have some concerns. But my, another concern I have about that is because it's on a hill. And it's not just the climb heading west, but it's also the decline heading east. Because I've gone, and I'm not racing, I, I try to go really slow to that stop sign when it's snowy, and I've slid right across. And there have been many accidents that are never reported, that are near misses on that, that we see and our daughter sees, because she lives on the corner, so I just wanted to-
I hate about the roundabout, but remember, I look at the roundabout as more placeholder, as it was stated, and so we just wanna make sure-
I just wanted to get it on the record. Thank you.
No, but I think we, we gotta get in the queue for maybe a longer-term solution and, uh, we're not gonna sign that here tonight nor in the next few years, those, those quote-unquote "traffic engineers" won't help us with that.
Yeah.
Chief, if everybody else has spoken, I'd just like to hear my thoughts, please. Uh, when I first came to, to Dunbar and I was introduced to this intersection, I, I never saw a three-way, a three-way stop in my life. And it seemed like the natural flow of traffic was for the east and westbound traffic, which stops on either side. Well, when I stopped here to let other people turn, I learned very quickly that, uh, that wasn't the way things were done here, because I had people, Hawk and Abby, they were really upset with me or something like that. So, um, I think the natural flow is east and west, which stops north and south, that, that's kinda what I, what I had thought here. So I gave a little thought to, um, how would that actually work out? Because it's a single lane in each direction. So last Thursday, I took a ride down there, I went, I was there at six o'clock in the morning, some of you probably saw my green car down there. I parked- I parked over here at, uh, the Family Dental, and I watched the intersection. And I made some kinda interesting observations. Now, my big concern were the turning movements. So it would be, uh, Clinton Street turning onto Stock North, and, um, Concord Stage turning onto Jewett. And what I found is, they were, in the morning, there were very, very few that made the turn. And as I read the data, the traffic count picked up. It was, it was pretty much the same. What I, what I saw that day was fairly similar, except the volume of cars I saw was lower. So I was there 6:00 in the morning till 8:30, I think. And my concern was, if you're traveling westbound, you know, and this eastbound traffic coming, these cars are gonna get jammed up. They're gonna back this traffic up because they can't make the turn to go Stock North. And what I saw really kinda surprised me. The traffic that came, kinda came in spurts. So there would be five or six cars that would go through the intersection, and then there'd be nothing for a while, sometimes for almost a minute. So what I, what I learned, and I watched in the afternoon too, and it was the same type of thing. There was, I think there was plenty of opportunity for the, um, for the north and south traffic to be able to cross, because the eastbound traffic wasn't backing up. I, I did watch this in the morning, and that eastbound traffic backed way up to the hill, you know, past pages, I've seen it before, many times, but it's because of the stock. When that traffic is allowed to just travel at its natural pace, three, four, five, six cars go by, and there's a big break. So there's, there's plenty of time for other cars to cross east, uh, on the north and south, through that intersection. Chief, if we did go that option, I mean, if the state didn't respond, just how would we notify the traffic that that is now just a two-way stop and not a three-way stop? Because that might cause the same amount of accidents we've already had at that intersection by reversing it back. That's my only dilemma with going backwards. When I ever read the report, and they kinda were going back to a two-stop sign situation, I thought that that's almost gonna cause as many accidents in the reverse of what we have now with the three-stop signs. And with that, there would, there would definitely be some danger in there. Uh, and, you know, after we made the change, there'd have to be some kinda education, there'd have to be some kinda warning signs to let people know that there's been some kinda change, maybe with those mobile signs. You know, and maybe some, uh, some police presence down there. Because there is gonna be a learning curve. But, um, I think the, uh, the east and westbound having, uh, no stop signs, just put a stop on the north and south would work really well. Everybody'd be able to turn, at least anecdotally from what I saw last Thursday in the morning and in the evening, when I watched the traffic flow. Uh, one other thing that I've noticed, I mostly work days, so I can't really speak so much for the nights. But the accidents that I've been to, I've been to a few in the intersection. Mostly, they bend along this eastbound lane. And it has to do with cars stopping, somebody else plowing in behind them. Because somebody stopped for the stop sign, and somewhere down the line, somebody didn't stop in time. So that's been the bulk of the accidents that I've been to, down in this intersection.
But Chief, don't you think that would cause more people to speed through that intersection? Now that there's no stop sign, they're, they're just gonna go flying through.
It's, it's 35 miles an hour.
Yeah, but...
I know, I know.
There's 30 in the center of town, and they go through here at 50.
I know. You're never gonna be able to make that 100% compliance, it's impossible. No matter how hard we try. We got one guy who, um, he spends the bulk of his traffic enforcement time down there. He writes a lot of violations there, and he still sees that kinda stuff happening. I can tell you anecdotally, in the time that I was there, I didn't see anybody run through any stop signs. I didn't see any, anything dangerous down there. I know that driving, in the time that I was there, I didn't see anything like that in those four hours that I was there, in the morning and the evening. Now, I know driving there, I've seen near misses, I've had near misses. My, my strategy is to spend as little time in that intersection as I can. And I do, and I zip right through there. Once, once it's safe to go and I'm committed, I go. Because less is better inside that. It, it's a dangerous intersection. But from what I've seen, you know, that's my recommendation, is, is the, um, stop at Jewett Road, Stock North, let the other traffic flow. And again, there's gonna have to be some kind of education component. For me, those, um, those speed signs, I, I travel quite a bit, and I go through communities that have them. And I can tell you, for me personally, they really get my attention. When I'm driving through and I see the flashing sign, and, uh, you know, I know I'm going too fast, I reduce my speed and try to make it stop flashing. That's what I do. But I'm, I'm almost 60, I'm like 25.
Yeah, but you're the police.
That's the way I drive. You know, I'm Massachusetts, I'm not. But, but that's how I react to it. And I know this, this, there's gonna be that component, there's gonna be that population that's gonna try and speed through it. It's gonna happen, but, uh, there's a lot of people who are compliant and wanna actually survive driving through the intersection. So I think all in all, the proponent is, it would probably be a good thing to do. I really like the flashing lights to warn of the, uh, the stop signs. Uh, maybe some kind of a warning ahead on either Clinton Street, or, I mean, uh, Jewett Road or Stock North. One thing you gotta be careful of is having too many signs in a small location. Because if you have stop, yield, three-way stop, and all this stuff, it's too much to read. It's, it's kind of overwhelming, so you tend to kinda blank it all out, not see any of it. So those are my thoughts on the intersection, for what it's worth.
Okay, one more comment?
Um, Michelle, 2304. Didn't that stop sign used to be a lot bigger?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I thought it used to be. I mean, I remember as a kid that, like, one of the biggest stop signs in New Hampshire. And it literally was, that's what it, I remember that.
Good that you were a lot smaller.
I was just curious if there was a reason why, if it was a bigger stop sign...
It was, you're right.
I thought it was so.
It just isn't a size though, on the three-way stop, the three-way stop sign configuration. I think that some, the engineer from the state said there were like three of them in the state of New Hampshire. Is that something like that? Because I know you mentioned the number, I think it was three in the state.
Oh, we should get rid of it, then we'll be number one.
I was thinking, like, there's two other communities that have the same problem that we have?
Where are they?
And the...
Some in Manchester.
Okay.
One other comment though, Chief, I, I agree with what you're saying, pre-flow east, west. The only thing though is, again, they, they would look at, I believe that they're gonna have to look at a, a turning pocket to get people out of the flow of traffic, to take, to take that road.
I don't think so. The, the traffic that was, was traveling east and westbound, the volume wasn't there. I know that you see the backups here, from, coming from where, uh, in the morning. But when the traffic just flowed, they, they, I, I don't think there'd be any backup.
When you look at their numbers, that's, we're numbers people.
I understand that. But what the numbers don't tell you is the cars are coming five or six in a group, and then there's nothing for a period of time.
In common sense, yeah. In common sense would, 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 uh, make you think that people would stop.
John, they did, they did say to us that even though, you know, we're gonna look at some options here.
Yeah.
Down the road, one of their options would be, and they, and Chris or two, that turning lanes in those east-westbound locations were probably gonna be, you know, one more step down the road.
Yeah. So the numbers are gonna just keep going up?
They did speak, yeah.
Yeah.
But they said it wasn't, you know, as quick as the signs and the other things we're talking about.
Right. And I think the signs though too, again, that's gonna happen pretty quickly.
Right.
It's not a 10-year endeavor.
No, no, that's, that's... I'm thinking early spring, by the time the state gets around with myself, I don't think it's gonna happen in the, in the winter months with the plowing in the roads.
Oh, I see Mary Beth here, she needs to just keep poking them along.
My, my concern about having a four-way stop there is the, the fun that you have in the morning with the eastbound traffic coming from where, you're gonna be able to have just as much fun in the afternoon as the westbound traffic comes and has to stop. It, it's, I think it'll, you'll have a mess twice a day instead of just once. So, those are my thoughts.
The frustration of bad behavior too, of multiple...
Those are, those are my thoughts on the...
Last, last comments now?
Uh, Don Harson, Berkshire Drive. Saturday morning, going to the transfer station. I've sat there for a long time, and unless you have a courteous, uh, courteous, uh, driver at the stop sign there on, uh, going, uh, east, and to let you get across to that, the traffic coming, uh, you know, going to where is heavy, and it takes a long time to get across that intersection.
Makes you leave a little bit more, doesn't it, Don?
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think you gotta leave the three-way stop and that, because people are seasoned to it, but better signage, plus people coming up, uh, from going east, or going west on, uh, 13 toward the intersection, they've gotta use their turn signal. So if there's some way you can let people know, because you sit there, and nobody has their turn signal on, and then this guy, you don't know if this guy's gonna turn, you don't know if he's gonna go straight. And so that holds up a lot of traffic, right there. So, you know, there's some people that just never use their turn signals. But those are the ones who end up, you know, so, oh, he's gonna, he's going straight, and you go pull out in the intersection, bang.
We're total stupidity.
Yeah.
Any final comments on this?
So I wanna address a couple of things. One I wanna address with the chief was saying is, I've got a different experience with that intersection over many years. One is, I've stood up holding political signs, which won't surprise anybody. And the pattern you saw sometimes, that one sometimes doesn't. I live a little bit further down Clinton Street, and I try and come on Clinton Street from Page Road every single morning. Some mornings it's the pattern you talk about, other mornings it's a totally different pattern. There seems to be no consistency in the pattern on that way headed, whatever direction. I guess it's what headed into, is that eastward? Into Concord. Um, so I know what you're talking about, I've certainly seen that pattern with cars, and that a braking, that cars in a braking. I stood at the Boe Community Center and seen the same, many times, and some days you get patterns like that, some days you don't. So that's anecdotal, but it's not super reliable. Next thing I wanna say is, Boe had this, has the same problem with its main intersection outside its old fire station, its community center. We had, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago, at town meeting, I'm losing track, I think it was only two years ago. We had money from the state, seed money, that wouldn't have paid for all of it, would've paid for a lot of the roundabout. And the people who show up, it was decided at town meeting, and the folks who show up at town meeting are a lot of the old timers, and a lot of the younger families and the kids, families that have kids in the high school that want that roundabout didn't show up. And the town voted it down, and the money was gone. So I think it's a great idea, you, to get in line, because to say it's a part of the 10-year plan, you're right, you'd be 10 or 20 years out easily, from what I see on that, that 10-year plan. Um, and get in line, you can always turn it down, just like Boe did, you know, if you don't want it. But I think it's really wise to get in line. The last thing I wanna say, is there any press here? No, good. I'm careful sometimes, I'm on... Last night, last night I was at the DOT...
Just a video.
It's a video.
Anyway, last night I was at the DOT hearing up on the heights for the widening of, um, A-93 and with the door off, exit one on 89. And I'm about, I'll say this publicly, because I'm about to draft a letter, I hope on behalf of the entire delegation, DOT is not listening to us. And there was a hearing on Valentine's Day, where we went in there, and they've got some cockamamie plan, where they're gonna pull traffic off, they're gonna put it on Locking Hill Road, have a signal light on one side of 89, have semis go under 89, have a second signal light and get back on the highway. Which means right on the main road ending out of Boe, they're gonna have all kind of semi-traffic with two signal lights, about 500 feet apart. It's preposterous. They're cutting off the access to 3A in pretty bizarre ways. It's now a TIF zone, tax incentive zone for Boe. They came right out and said they're not paying any attention to that. They're not listening to us. They didn't listen to us in February, and they weren't listening last night. So to the extent you got DOT, let me just say, strong arm it a little bit, because they're not listening to Boe, and if you wanted to listen to you, you're gonna have to be a little more assertive to make sure they're listening to you, after my experience with DOT. I was pretty appalled at what I was hearing and what I've seen over time on that whole pattern that they're trying to do on the 8993 stuff on the widening. Um, Concord was there last night, the mayor was there as well, was their director of development, I think they was called. They were having the same issues with DOT, and they got up having the same thing, saying this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in Concord to deal with what we're doing, we want river access. I don't know if DOT is trying to save dollars or what, but they are just not meeting the needs and the requests of the communities that are involved by this whole thing. So I just put that out there, because that's just another piece of my experience with it, just from last night, again, as I say. Um, having been at both the Valentine's Day hearing and the last night, I'm seeing this, there's just no interest in what we think our needs are. So, you want?
This will be on at 11 tonight.
Any comments?
What I wanna do is, uh, take comments from tonight, and we'll get this up, we just put our thoughts together, taking comments tonight, so we can come up with... Because I see some, uh, some comic themes from people, and I think, uh, one thing value-added, one thing value-added was, I thought tonight, would I hear loud and clear, uh, visibility, lighting, uh, approach signs. So I see those loud and clear, and I see that, I agree with the chief, we don't wanna overdo it. But make sure of that, we can, we're gonna put some words together, and we'll make the proposal. And the 10-year plan, we are pursuing a, uh, a placeholder in the 10-year plan, for sure. Okay. And, uh, so I'm gonna close this public hearing now, and, uh, thank you all for coming out for this. We're gonna continue with our Sutkman's meeting, but I think it's, uh, appreciate your, I, I'm glad this interest in this, this problem area. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. You guys are welcome to stay and watch after the meeting, Bill.
I got some paint, Brian.
We're gonna take a recess for one minute.
You might need to sing a...
I'll see you later. I will not...
Yeah, that's in the...
What happened to me this morning, I was coming from Concord, and I started walking along this side. But before I turn, I can tell that... Coming from where? Because you have that sense of, what are they gonna be doing? But I don't think they realize it, because they come on... You know, hold that right, it's right there in the corner. It may be, it may be an approach sign further down. I don't even know, does it mean the synthesis?
Yeah, I'm serious, I think what I'll do, I'm gonna go to the, I'll draw the...
If you see my draft, we'll see it next, next time the video, you'll meet...
It's two weeks.
Thanksgiving week, so two weeks. And we'll do it, and we need to... Staff, I had a, a PD of these, a staff that I sent out by...
I was just gonna raise it, it's gonna be more maintenance because...
I think we can do better than three months. Yeah, it kinda has a, a coke and fraud and...
Even when we get it back to us, I think it's gonna be a similar... That's why I didn't want to be too hopeful this fall, I took this on early...
Of course, we get the momentum going.
The one thing I think I failed to say, is they can't miss it.
All right, I'm gonna, I, I need to bring this back to order again.
Sure.
Thank you for, uh, those who wanna say thank you.
That was Mary Beth Walsh, by the way.
Walsh.
Walsh.
W-A-L.
L?
Walsh.
L-T-Z.
Z. All right, so I think thank you, Chief, and thank you, Sergeant Ramar, for, uh, for your presentation, the good work, and, uh, it continues. All right. Boy, the agenda, I'm already down to the mailboxes again, because we talked about the health plan.
Yeah, we did.
Yep, so I'm down the mailbox, so, uh, I just wanna start, Leanne's gave us a copy in the mailbox of the, uh, she gave people a heads-up about the healthcare plan changes coming, everyone saw that. Thank you, Leanne, for reading for us to go back. And I saw you also summarized the meeting to those people who weren't there, as far as, uh, new guidance, which is great.
I also prepared the, uh, budget worksheets for all the departments, those were distributed.
Which...
Took a lot of time, but we're making progress.
I saw you added a bunch of worksheets to, to the handles.
Yeah.
Okay. Got a letter from, from the NRMAC, I, what, it announces appointment of Ross Cunningham, representative of county administrative functions. I have no idea what he does for Dunbar. Do you have any, yeah, can you, can you shed a light on that?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Chief, I got a...
Chief, I got a letter, uh, from your, from your department through Chris, uh, talking about, uh, Officer Brian Tyro taking advantage of tuition reimbursement.
Yeah.
Looked at it in the budget.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. As long as it follows the plan, personnel plan. Police Department, we had a, a letter from the police department, uh, upcoming events and activity logged for October. Traffic study, that goes back to Lean. We all had a chance to look at that. All right, Lean, if you just give us an update, uh, we had some money left over in the administrative budget as far as maintenance budget. Um, we have the quotes still pending, I believe.
Unfortunately, um, with the short week, I have, uh, the post transportation. I think it's still a work in progress. I don't know that Woody's heard any from any of his contractors.
I actually need to meet with you so that we're giving the same information to each contractor.
Yeah.
So I need to get what you said, so, cause I have two contractors coming, I believe, Tuesday.
Great, great.
So that email that I gave you would not suffice to print and use and add notes?
I, but I, we'll talk, cause I don't know what you told him you wanna have done, so we tell him the same thing.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Now, just for the both of you, before you guys talk too much about it, we had already reviewed the items that we agreed to have done on that. If we look back at our meeting minute notes, the board has selected, decided a list of items for you guys on each of that.
For the, the repairs that needed to be done.
That's right.
And I believe that's what I have mentioned in a memo.
Yeah.
Which involved mitigating the mold on the plywood, um, sealing the plywood and laying down the vinyl sheet, um, washing the walls, painting the walls, because they had never been painted, and then adding the base, um,
Molding.
molding around the edge, so.
That was, is there anything else you can remember, Woody?
I don't know if there's electrical problems, covers, anything like that.
I know we had already worked on it, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we go by that original list, cause we'd already, as a board, kinda reviewed it.
I'll look at.
Yeah, we're doing just the bathroom, correct?
I believe so.
That's what I, that's why I wanna meet with Lean to make sure we're not talking, cause at one point we were talking flooring in the office area.
Yeah.
We were talking taking care of some of that. I wanna make sure that we're on the same page that it's just.
I think we'll start with the bathroom, Woody, and then, uh, you know, we'll step by later.
Right, and that's why I wanna make sure we're on the same page that it's just that area.
Yeah.
Now, um, with that pending, uh, this, the, the roof repair at the safety center, I think is critical.
Yeah, and again, I had met with, uh, Twin Metal Roofing the week before last. He thought that he could get me that quote before tonight, but I had not heard, so I have his phone number. I will give a follow-up call with him.
If we start running low on money, the vinyl siding, I, I could, I'd rather rear the safety center.
Yeah.
I could, I'd rather do the roof this year and.
Well, he, I don't know if you noticed, but while you brought it up, that was gonna be one of my subjects at the end.
Okay.
The vinyl side was pinned there, removed and installed the new side.
Correct.
That's good.
So he's already off that job and we were talking about, you know, letting him go to the other side right away, so I think that.
I just don't wanna, um, I'd rather eliminate the leak, who I think you would agree with me.
Yeah. And if, the leak, I'm hoping, like, is not a big dollar.
Huge.
Right.
And if, and then I, I think if we have money, I'd say we definitely hit the, uh, the other side for those, so the vinyl siding on the other side.
Yeah. So if we could get the numbers back for your area, Woody, we'd like to make those decisions on your area and that roof before we commit to the other side of the building there for your vinyl siding. Did you guys like the workmanship the guy did?
I thought he did a great job. They, they were fast, they were, uh, they seemed.
Professional.
Yeah, very professional. They seem to do pretty good work, um, the, the quality of the materials seemed pretty good. He did leave one piece of vinyl with the fire department and he left the label off the end of the box. I photographed the label, I'm gonna send it to Lean.
Okay.
Cause she put it with the, with the file, so that you need it again, you've got the, you've got the part number.
Right. And you know, the, we did go with the better siding again, just you guys are aware, we went to the, not even the middle grade, went to the top grade siding because there was a mixture of sidings on that product from the lowest end to the medium end and the highest end, all the same color, but different wood grain patterns. He picked them up like that and knew what it was and we decided as a board to go with the better. Hoping it holds up a few more years with the ice coming down.
And then the painting's been, uh, we're gonna, basically, uh, the painting has been deferred to the spring. Yeah, we're out of the painting season now.
But we haven't covered that.
We haven't covered the month, so that's, that's funny, that's, we'll be done.
So all the entryways, all the columns, all of the, the, you know, gable lengths, those entryways are all gonna be done and take care of it. Nearly gonna clean up the steps in the back, pressure wash them, seal them.
Okay, great.
So the building should look substantially nicer.
Okay, um.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I, I think the inbox is pretty empty. I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comment, public comments again.
Actually, I have one thing on the safety complex. Is a board thought of, uh, actually just putting a whole new roof on that building, like, get it patched for now and then next year put a completely new roof on it, cause you have two different, three different roofs on there. You know what I mean? You have the original building, then we, they did the addition that goes to the fire station side, goes to school. Then you have when we built the police station, you know, just doing one whole new roof and we'll be done with it, set up.
We did kind of, um, go over it, you know, somewhat.
Yeah.
But our thought was, uh, that building was designed in the sixties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with that existing roofing that's on there. So we'd have to check some structural things out about that building before we jumped into it, but we knew that would also be a larger cost and we were trying to take care of some of the smaller items first.
No, I'm saying for like, your, your big project like next year, you'll put a new roof on that building and then, you know, you're doing all this other nice work to what they get it buttoned up, do the roof, you're done. Now you can move on to another building. You know what I'm saying?
We'll definitely consider that.
Yeah, yeah, so we are working on it somewhat.
Yep. Okay, Chief.
Yeah, I was gonna mention the, the, the siding, and you already brought that up. The other thing I wanted to mention was paving. Jeff finished paving the back lot there and, and I gotta tell you, I watched during the last rainstorm and it drained really well. It was pitched, it looked like it was pitched perfectly. And, uh, the following morning when there was ice, I went in there, it was a nice puddle in the whole parking lot. So I think they did a fabulous job of, uh, of getting that thing leveled, graded and pitched.
And it's, connects to the school, turn around? No problem connecting to the school?
Yeah, it seemed to, everything seemed to be fine. Put in drainage there, it, it was a, I think it was a first-class job.
Chief, are you gonna work with this, we were referencing the one-way traffic to drop off? I, I thought that was an excellent idea. I'm, I wasn't sure why they never did it in prior years, only that, you know, that road might get somewhat narrower in the winter is all I could think of.
Well, the road's gonna be narrow as it is, but the quality of the road is there. I, I don't know that that road would really take the, the pounding. I don't think the, the qua, the quality of the road was there to be able to take that pounding of the constant traffic of the, of the cars dropping off every day.
Previously or even now?
Previously, I think it's gonna be fine now, so.
So you're gonna talk to the school about that?
We, we've been talking about it, it's just a matter of when we implement it. The, the morning drop off isn't gonna be any problem. The problem comes in the afternoon where, uh, the children have to be sent out to the cars. So we've gotta kinda work through that process a little bit and, uh, you know, might, it actually may require them to assign an additional person there. But we'll get that sorted out and, uh, and get it implemented. It's a, it's a much safer plan.
Okay.
I just wanna thank the board for supporting Officer Tyler's, uh, tuition reimbursement request. The school that he chose is the same school that I went through under the personnel plan. Um, it's a very good school, great program, and economically it's very, very competitive. Um, so just thank you on his behalf.
Okay, thanks.
One last point.
Go ahead.
Troy Simpson, one of our part-time offices, is hired and is, is already started down in Gostown. So we're really, really proud of him. He's, he's done well.
But we lost him.
We, we lost him. We lost a part-timer. He's got a full-time career job and, and we're gonna see more of him in mutual aid calls and things like that.
Okay. No, we're still, we're still tied in with Gostown, may not be education, but it has to do with other departments, mutual aid.
So is he no longer a part of our? Do you ever provide like a resignation letter for the personnel file? I think we need, we should have.
He, yes, he, he will be providing one that we'll have over there and I'll send you a copy.
Please, any debt, that's fine, okay.
Okay, back to the board. I'm gonna take it to Dave first.
Mike, I think we covered everything we had, uh, on the agenda earlier on.
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna really ramble on too much of the weather. Well, up to you.
Well, okay, so I just wanna give you guys, we talked last week about the cost of healthcare, you know? And, uh, I know you made the comment that maybe in two thousand and five it was a, a certain point. I couldn't get there, but I went to, uh, organization that tracks the cost of healthcare. So from two thousand and eight to the first two months of two thousand and seventeen, healthcare's gone up a hundred and forty-four percent for the single person, for the family a hundred and seventy-seven percent. And they're looking at the future double-digit numbers going forward. So just so people understand what healthcare costs, it's a struggle, cause we're sitting here trying to manage for the town and manage for the employee and trying to find something that works, that's gonna fit for everyone. So I'm hoping, cause they stress that that plan was the same as the first one, except they had source of service, which it, uh, requires a little responsibility on the person, you know, to go look for those places and it would be no deductible, so. Just to, so you know, the, the position we're in is we serve two masters. We're trying to keep the people we have working here and we're also trying to address with some of the townspeople who may be paying for your healthcare, but don't have it to themselves. Cause I heard that comment already, you know, and, and it's, uh, a tough situation to, to be in, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Thank you, Bob. Concur.
Okay.
And I'll take it to Tom Fisher.
I just wanted to let the board know that I attended a seminar today that was, um, uh, focused of the trustee of the trust funds. John Casey had requested that, um, I attend that with him, so that if there was anything that he missed, that I'd be able to assist him with. Um, I've asked him to come before the board to talk about a few of the options that they have as trustees. Um, I think it's important that the selectmen are aware that, that the trustee of the trust funds work on the same line as the cemetery trustees and there was a lot of good information. Uh, there's new information that they're gonna have to comply with. Um, the, uh, state, uh, the federal trust in, uh, by January first is gonna require that they upload their MS nine and MS ten through their portal, like I typically do through, um, the DRA. And it's actually the same company that's developing that for, um, the federal trust. So I think it was a good thing that I went. I think I can lend a lot of, um, guidance and assistance with John, but I've asked him to come in and talk to you about, uh, what he's learning, what he would like, um, to share with you. I expect him in the near future.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, one other thing, uh, this week recently, we had one individual contact the town, um, offices for, to ask if we had, um, adopted the, um.
Expanded.
Was it the veterans?
Expanded veterans.
Expanded veterans option and, um, I, so we're hearing a little bit of, uh, information about that. So it's possible that there may be petition warrant or a call in, uh, February that comes before the board. Um, I'm not sure which director is gonna go, but at the time that it was, uh, passed at state level, the, you know, board decided not to act on it until they could get, we could get more information, so.
I got one more question for you once names done.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we, um, make a packet of information that I prepared earlier? This information may be two weeks later, agenda, just that you can be aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Woody, have you had any new applicants at the transfer station?
Don't say it.
Um, I know it's snowing tonight and tomorrow, but, um, do we have the sign out on the road? After the storm, can we try and get that one out there to try and get a couple of new applicants, cause I think it's getting pretty slim now, right?
Well, yeah, we don't typically leave that sign out. That's like a full hundred dollar sign.
Right. We'll leave it out at night.
We'll put it out when we're there.
Yeah, that's, we don't leave it out at night.
Yeah.
It is posted on NHMA website. It's put there and on the town website.
I know it's, I know it's posted, what do you go through the?
Yeah, yeah, we'll stick it back out, we'll stick it back out on the.
On the side note to that, um, I like to figure out, um, I asked Lean, I'm gonna ask you too, to work with Lean during the next two weeks. I know we have Thanksgiving, but we're not gonna meet for two weeks.
Yeah.
But one thing, um, we may wanna consider is consider the recyclables, the non-cost-effective recyclables. Now, there's the stuff that we're not getting paid for or it's paid squat for. We may wanna consider at this time to put it in mainstream trash. Um, and we could pay for that additional tonnage by the, we're not paying salaries, cause we don't have the people there. And that would take some of the workload off the recycling center. So I wanna maybe work with Lean to identify those, uh, non, as I said, non-productive recycle, recyclables. And in fact, someone was saying even tonight, Davey, we were.
Chin Line just before I left had the, uh.
Yeah, we got it on one o'clock, yeah.
Showing that, you know, people think there's a magic bubble, cause you put it in a recycling bin, that it actually is gonna be recycled and have someplace to go, and they said that a large percentage of recycled material has nobody to purchase it on the other end. And so it goes right back into the transfer, uh, landfill.
Where I think what you're, what they're referring to, cause I saw the part of the ad is Panard, and they, they're talking about single screen.
So.
Where source separated, there's a, actually a pretty big difference between the two.
Yeah.
At this point, I think the loss of salary, uh, payroll, we could actually use the, those dollars to pay for the extra tonnage we create. And so that's something I wanna consider. So that would take some workload off the front-end recycling center side. So I'll work with Lean, we'll, we'll get the numbers, we'd like to review the numbers in two weeks.
I will be on vacation next week, so if we have time, I don't know how busy you'll be.
Next week?
No, I'm on vacation, so.
Oh, I say next weeks. Oh, next time, okay.
Oh, speaking of, you gonna be changing your hours at all? Nothing?
Okay. Okay, anything else, Davey, Bob, we're good? All right.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-one.
So be it.